President Canepa, the time is now nine AM and you can call the meeting to order.
Great. Good morning colleagues, staff, members of the public. It's nine AM on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we're calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start with having the clerk of the board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the Interpretation Globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, then select the Spanish language, and finally click Done. At this time, I would like my colleague Elizabeth or Paulina to provide these instructions in Spanish. Interpreters? Give me one second, Mr. President. You can go to the podium and then just provide the instructions in Spanish. Thank you.
Spanish interpreter. Para acceder a la interpretación en español, busque, si usted está conectado por computadora, busque el globo terráqueo que se encuentra en la parte inferior de la pantalla y presione el globo para elegir interpretación de idiomas. Si se conecta por tableta o smartphone, busque los tres puntitos o las reticencias, luego elija interpretación de idiomas, español, y finalizar. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Paulina. Thank you, Marisol. Back to you, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much. Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in the pledge. Can we now have the roll call, please?
Sure. Sir President Spear? Thank you. Sir President Corzo?
Present.
Thank you. Sir President Mueller?
Here.
Thank you. Sir President Gocia?
Here.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Here.
Thank you. All present.
Great. A moment of silence for remembrance of the victims of the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three Half Moon Bay mass shooting. Thank you for the roll call. Moving on, we are going to take a few moments here to remember that a little more than two years ago on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, our county was shaken by the horrible shooting that occurred on that date in Half Moon Bay. While this event has pained and impacted all of us throughout the county, the impact has been especially felt in Half Moon Bay. And I'm going to ask my colleague Ray Mueller, Supervisor for District Three, to share remarks and lead us in a moment of silence.
Thank you, President Canepa. I think we'll never forget that day. Violence like that that happens to community is never forgotten. But out of that violence, we continue every day to go ahead and try to build a better future, both for the families who are impacted by it and for those who will come after them. And so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and lead us in a moment of silence in memory of those who we lost. Thank you. On January twenty-fourth, ALIS, the nonprofit in Half Moon Bay and the National Farmworker Ministry will hold a two-year remembrance ceremony in honor of the victims and survivors at eleven AM at the ALIS Suñao Center in Half Moon Bay and a community vigil at six PM at the ALIS Yellow House in Half Moon Bay. For more details about this event, please contact ALIS at six five zero five six zero eight nine four seven. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Mueller, now we have the part of the agenda honoring the life of Board Member remarks. Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a heavy heart that I remember the life of Judy Bloom, who served first as an advisor to the effort to bring a commission on the status of women to San Mateo County. Served as one of its first presidents and then subsequently served as my district director for ten years when I was in the State Assembly. She was a generous person, a philanthropic person, a community person, and her life, all eighty years of it, though, was cut short, and I'd like to remember her today.
Great. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, President Canepa. So these are Board Member comments. The fires in Southern California have had a tremendous impact throughout our county and obviously throughout the state. And I know that our entire board feels so strongly for those who have been impacted by them there. I, in my district, have the, much of the unincorporated rural county, and have heard already from mayors and from residents who are concerned about what those fires, what those, from the lessons from those fires and how ready we are here in San Mateo County to respond to an event of that scale. And so I'd be asking at this time for the board to consider creating an ad hoc committee to go ahead and to look at the lessons coming out of Southern California, to look at our state of readiness here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments? Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have requested, and I believe the president has concurred, that we actually have a briefing provided to us by both Cal Fire and Central Fire. We have many areas in San Mateo County that are much like the Pacific Palisades area. And our readiness, I think, is not to the level that it should be. And I would recommend that beyond that ad hoc committee, we conceive of a campaign countywide in which we work with local city councils to be much more rigorous in evaluating homes to make sure that they have that five feet of area that is not subject to vegetation. Some cities have already taken those steps, but we need to do a much better job. I also think we need to look at the issue of water pressure generally. And we have this huge reservoir from which we are able to acquire the water necessary. But one of the issues in Southern California was the lack of water pressure. Do we need backup batteries if they're going to cut the electricity? Do we need backup batteries? There's a lot of questions that we need to get answers to, so I encourage us to delve deeply into them.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any other member comments? Seeing none, I do have honor the life of today. This morning, I would like to honor the life of North County legend and dear friend Maria Estelle Brizuela, who passed away December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. She was eighty-two years old. A beloved wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, aunt, mentor, and friend, Marie was an icon within the community, and her presence touched the lives of many over the course of her remarkable life, including my own. Marie grew up in North Beach and was a graduate of Galileo High School. She graduated in nineteen sixty from Grace Ball College and later received her adult teaching credential from San Jose State University. She married her high school sweetheart, Robert Brizuela, on July twenty-ninth, nineteen sixty-two. They bought their first home in Broadmore Village, where they lived for sixty years. Marie was employed as an executive secretary to the Personnel Commission of the Jefferson Elementary School District, Department Secretary for the Daily City Fire Department, and Adult Education Instructor for the South San Francisco Unified School District. Marie served for a remarkable forty-one years as the longest elected Board Member for the Jefferson Elementary School District. Marie was elected as Police Commissioner for the Broadmore Police Protection District, and she's held various positions on the Board for the Broadmore Property Owners Association for more than four decades. Marie was also awarded Woman of the Year by the State of California Legislature, Twelfth District, in two thousand and four, in recognition for outstanding service and dedication to the people of California. She will be dearly missed. At this time, we'll move to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but that are not on the agenda for today's meeting. For matters that are listed on the consent agenda and for matters that are set for closed session, given the length of the agenda and that we are anticipating a good deal of public comment today, with the agreement of my colleagues, I intend to limit all public comments to one minute today. And so with that, I'll ask the clerk to start with public comments from those here in the chamber.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker slips from chambers, so if you wish to speak, the speaker slips are outside. Just bring them in. So Madam Clerk, at this time, could you ask for a Zoom comment?
Okay, may we have Zoom comments?
Absolutely, Mr. President. As a reminder, the consent agenda begins at item number ten today through and including closed session. We have four hands raised. Elsa Schaefer, followed by Martin Fox. And after Martin Fox, I'll make a final call for public comment by Zoom. Elsa, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. My name's Elsa Schaefer. I live in Menlo Park and lived in the county forty years. I was lucky to attend part of the ICAC retreat last Saturday, which just had stellar thinking and commentary by staff and the commissioners, and was so impressive. I urge you all to attend their meetings also. At the retreat, one staff member talked to us about the fact that a number of board discussions have happened around hiring an ad hoc Inspector General when the need occurred. And this was a topic, or the idea of Inspector General was brought up a number of times by the commissioners. And I just recommend you're looking into the fact that having an ongoing employee as an Inspector General gives you the ability to track metrics and see patterns when they emerge and to catch much earlier things like the issue you're spending so much time on right now, which is a distraction in many ways, but which is harmful for the county as well in the sheriff's office. So thank you so much. The caliber of that group, staff, and commissioners is just outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsa. We have Martin Fox, followed by Grace X, and after Martin, I'll make a final call for raised hands in Zoom. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, my fellow veterans, President Canepa and County Attorney Mr. Niblin, as well as Supervisors Spear, Corzo, Mueller, and County Executive Mr. Callagie. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by initiating a vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program. Make the reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Landman-Peter Short Act a top county state legislative priority. Make the immediate implementation of Senate Bill Forty-three a top county health department priority and defunding the Disability Rights Californian Law Foundation of Silicon Valley Attorneys who defend the Immoral Landman-Peter Short Act a top county federal legislative priority. California's residents need a Dorothea Dixon-inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. That's why you should make the defunding of the intellectually and morally bankrupt Law Foundation of Silicon Valley and Disability Rights Californian Attorneys a top county federal legislative priority. Thank you.
Mr. President, are you okay with the final call comments at this time? Okay, great. Please raise your hand in Zoom, and a final name will be announced for public comment. After that name is called, there will be no other hands accepted, so please do raise your hand at this time. Okay, final call has been made, and the last two speakers will be Grace X and Anne. Grace, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good morning. I have brought up this issue before, but I am appalled that I've been attacked because I brought this up, and it's been brushed under the carpet by, I believe, County Attorney Silverman. This summer, I discovered an Instagram account named ThePeople'sChamp underscore six one nine. It had the name Marco A. Derazzo attached to it. I do not know if this is the same Marco Derazzo that is on the Sheriff's Commission and on the Planning Commission of San Bruno. However, I believe it is because there's just too many coincidences. The profile picture is a bulldog. And anyways, it has really disgusting comments on it, making fun of domestic violence, a baby coddling, the private parts of a baby, making fun of the disabled and mentally ill. And I would like to see something done because women on this board claim to be champions of women and children. And if you brush us under the rug, you're not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grace. Our final speaker is Anne. Anne, please unmute and begin.
Thank you very much. So, good morning, Board of Supervisors. I ask you to agendize a moment of silence for those who lost their lives and all of those suffering in Southern California due to the fires. Thank you, Supervisor Mueller, for your recommendation for evaluating the safety of the coast. I also ask that a moratorium on building on the midcoast, particularly in Moss Beach and Montero, is made until a full assessment of the water system, which is privately owned, can be completed. It relies solely, the water system relies solely on well water and electric pump system. Without power, it will not function. The town can very much look like Pacific Palisades. Also, there is not a safe evacuation rate out of town. Excuse me. There is not a single traffic light. There is no emergency room at this time. The Board of Supervisors is our government. All of you govern the unincorporated areas of the county. We rely on all of you for our safety. You have a legal and moral obligation to provide residents of Moss Beach with safety and proper infrastructure. Please, please do not forget us. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Mr. President, that concludes comments.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks to all who shared their comments. We'll now take action to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda. Before I do that, Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I wanted to request that item five be moved to the January twenty-eighth agenda.
Great. Are there any additional changes for members? Seeing none, with that, can we get a motion, Supervisor Corzo?
I move to approve the consent agenda, moving item five, to approve the agenda and consent agenda items, moving item five to one twenty-eight.
Second.
Great. So we have a motion by Supervisor Corzo and a second by Supervisor Gocia. Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear? Thank you. Sir President Corzo?
Yes.
Sir President Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir President Gocia?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. This is the presentation awards part of our agenda. We have one proclamation today, specifically item one, which is a presentation of a proclamation designating January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. I'm sponsoring this item, and I'll offer a few words. January twenty-seventh has since been established by the United Nations as International Holocaust Remembrance Day, a time to honor the memory of the six million Jews and millions of others who were murdered during the Holocaust. It is also a day to reflect on the resilience, courage, and strength of the survivors whose lives were forever changed by this atrocity. The Holocaust reminds us of the darkest potential of humanity when hatred, bigotry, and indifference are allowed to fester. The United Nations Resolution Rejecting Holocaust Denial and All Forms of Intolerance challenges us to confront prejudice wherever it exists. It also urges us to educate future generations about the dangers of hatred to ensure that such a tragedy is never repeated. As we reflect on this dark chapter in history, we must also confront the troubling reality that antisemitism remains a persistent threat in our world today. Today, the County of San Mateo joins the international community in designating January twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-five as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. I'd like to dedicate this proclamation to the family and friends of former Congressman Tom Lantos, who represented San Mateo County in the House of Representatives. Mr. Lantos was the only Holocaust survivor to ever serve in the US Congress. He was born in Budapest, Hungary, where as a teenager he was sent to a forced labor camp by the German Nazi occupying military. He escaped the labor camp and sought refuge with an aunt who lived in a safe house operated by Raoul Wallenberg, the Swedish diplomat who used his official status and power to issue visas to save thousands of Hungarian Jews. Mr. Lantos quickly joined the anti-Nazi resistance. After the Soviet Union liberated Budapest in nineteen forty-five, Mr. Lantos tried to locate his mother and family members, but he gradually came to realize that they had all perished in the Holocaust. Now I'm honored today to introduce Chelsea Hedquist, Tom Lantos's granddaughter and executive director of the Lantos Foundation, who will be joining us by Zoom to share her thoughts about this proclamation. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you, President Canepa. I'm so honored to be with you today. I come bearing greetings from my grandmother, Annette Lantos, who was Tom's partner in life, love, politics, and human rights advocacy for fifty-seven years. As you know, many of those years were spent very happily in San Mateo County, which my grandparents made their home after leaving Hungary following the Second World War. San Mateo County is where they raised my mother, who is the founder and president of the Lantos Foundation for Human Rights and Justice. I also want to convey warm greetings from her and deep appreciation from both my mother and grandmother for the Board of Supervisors' decision to issue this proclamation for International Holocaust Remembrance Day. As we witness antisemitism and even Holocaust denial surging around the world, and sadly, right here at home, statements and proclamations of this nature are more vital than ever. After the Holocaust, the world made a solemn vow: Never again. We have not fully lived up to this commitment to prevent genocide from occurring. We still have much work to do, but we cannot hope to stem the tide of genocidal hatred if we do not remember those darkest days of the Holocaust, if we do not honor those who survived it, and if we do not learn from the example of the courageous few who stood against such evil during those dark days. You can likely see right over my shoulder a painting that depicts Raoul Wallenberg, the Swedish diplomat that President Canepa mentioned in his remarks. Through his bravery, his creativity, his unwillingness to turn away from the evil he saw unfolding, Wallenberg saved tens of thousands of Hungarian Jews, my own grandfather included. He made the ultimate sacrifice to do this lifesaving work as he was taken by the Soviets following their liberation of Hungary, and he was never heard from again. Yet, Wallenberg's example has reverberated throughout the decades. He remained a guiding light for Tom Lantos throughout his life, including his thirty years in the US Congress, where his very first legislative effort was to secure honorary US citizenship for Wallenberg. Raoul Wallenberg's example is a guiding light still for us at the Lantos Foundation as we work to carry on Tom Lantos's legacy to protect, promote, and advance the human rights of all people throughout the world. Tom Lantos had a well-known saying, some of you may remember it, which has become, in a way, the foundation's unofficial motto. It goes like this: "The veneer of civilization is paper thin. We are its guardians, and we can never rest." In an age of rising authoritarianism, surging antisemitism, and the ongoing threat of genocide from China to Sudan to many other places, we must all strive to be the guardians that Tom Lantos spoke of and that he himself was. We must remember the past clearly. We must teach our rising generations about what once happened on humanity's watch and what we must never let happen again. We must all commit to stand more firmly against hate and repression in all its forms. Proclamations of this nature are one small, but still very important, way that we can do this. I want to express the Lantos Foundation and Lantos family's appreciation to the Board of Supervisors for recognizing International Holocaust Remembrance Day in this manner, and as you do so, for helping to keep alive the memory of Tom Lantos. I also want to send a special greeting to Supervisor Spear, who, of course, everyone knows succeeded Tom Lantos in his congressional seat and who has been a longtime friend, both of Tom and of the family. Thank you so much to all of you for inviting me to be part of this meeting and for allowing me to share these thoughts on this incredibly important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues want to say any words? Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chelsea, please convey to your mom and to your grandmother my good wishes. I also would like to point out that in memory of Congressman Tom Lantos, the Tom Lantos Human Rights Commission also provides guidance to the House of Representatives on issues of human rights violations. I served on that commission for a period of time. And it is a watchful eye over international efforts to somehow denigrate human rights and continues to be an important source of information to Congress. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments, colleagues? Seeing none, can we go to public comment, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers for this item, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
We are now taking Zoom comments for item number one for International Holocaust Remembrance Day. One hand raised for Anne. Please unmute Anne and begin. Anne, if you can unmute, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. I am in full support of this proclamation. I am glad that Supervisor Canepa, that you have had the courage to bring this to the board and public. Jewish families throughout the county have suffered significant antisemitism. Remembrance is the best way to prevent hate from continuing in the future. Never forget is the most important thing that we can do. Thank you so very much. This is very important, and particularly to the Jewish community, but to all of us throughout the county. We need to never forget, and we need to not have hate. So thank you very much. I do have a few more seconds, and I just would like to make a comment about the time that you allow people to speak in the public. If you could please raise that to two minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. I feel that the comments, it's very hard to make comments within a one-minute time period. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Anne. No further speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve this proclamation. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Sure. Thank you, Sir President Spear. Sir President Corzo?
Yes.
Sir President Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Sir President Gocia?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. And Kim, just so you know, we'll be mailing out a proclamation, but thank you for joining us today, okay? So with that, it's now time for us to move to the regular agenda. We'll start with item two, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the county's agreement with Exec U-SHIELD to extend the term by twenty-two months and to increase the amount payable. With that, I'd like County Health to come up and to present on this item.
Good morning. I am grateful to be able to address the San Mateo Board of, County Board of Supervisors, County and Assistant County Executives, and the County Attorney on this matter. My name is Robert Blake, and I am the Chief Operations Officer for San Mateo Medical Center. I'm joined today by Lieutenant Christopher Swinney of the San Mateo Sheriff's Office, serving as our Security Manager for the campus. The resolution before you is to extend the agreement with Exec U-SHIELD Incorporated for twenty-two months through October of two thousand and twenty-six. The ongoing funding and associated increase over previous period spending in the resolution are related to two primary issues. First, the nature and type of services needed at San Mateo Medical Center require security officers with the skill and experience to address the needs of the healthcare population differently than might be required in less demanding environments. And second, the need for differentiated officers who can function in highly specialized areas like the Emergency Department, psychiatric emergency services, and the inpatient mental health unit. Further, the presence of an armed officer at the door of the Emergency Department has proved has proven to be a deterrent to untoward behavior from bad actors approaching the medical center. My work with ExecuShield has been met with their willingness to learn new skills, develop the officers on the campus to be members of the care team, and support the demands of a busy acute care medical center. By increasing the resources available for ExecuShield's recruitment needs, they will be better positioned to find and retain quality security officers. We are pleased and encouraged by the response of ExecuShield to our many asks of them as they flex their officers toward creating the kind of healing environment we intend San Mateo Medical Center to be. Thank you for your consideration of the resolution.
Great. Thank you very much. Colleagues, are there any comments or questions at this time?
I have a question.
Yes. Supervisor Mueller?
So this wasn't put out to rebid? This is an extension?
There's a condition in the current contract that we would be able to extend for an additional two years, so no, it was not put out to bid.
Okay, so this is, all right. Actually, I just want to make it clear that at the end of that two years, I do expect an RFP process to take place. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? You know, I do have some questions. Can you talk a little bit about the violent incidents at the hospital? How many, and where are they typically concentrated? Do we have any numbers or data that you can share?
We do have data. I'm sorry that I do not have that on the top of my head. I would say that there is probably a...
Thank you.
If you could state your name for the record.
Christopher Swinney. I'm a lieutenant with the sheriff's office, also medical director at SMNC. Most of the events occur in the Psychological Emergency Services, PES, the ER, and then three A, which is long-term acute care for patients. Makes sense because...
Psychiatric care.
Sorry, I don't know all the lingo. But it makes sense because those patients are more challenging. They have more needs, and therefore, if we don't practice CPI and better de-escalation techniques, it always, not always, but sometimes ends up in violence. And so that's where most of our cases occur, which is what we've focused on since I've been assigned there, to increase the care for our patients. We're focusing on the patients, but I'm also focusing on the security guards to get them to a higher level. So as far as how many, off the top of my head, I would say last year, 2024, we call them code grays, which is usually something hands-on. Any kind of physical interaction with a patient, I would say we had, I think, twenty-three last year, and I would say ninety-five percent of them were in the ED, PES, and then three A.
Got it. That makes a lot of sense. Let me ask you, in terms of the response time, can you speak to that? Because obviously, we have sheriff officers within the hospital, correct?
So yes and no. If a sheriff's deputy is there or sergeant with an in custody patient, then yes, we have them there, but they're typically assigned to their patient. We don't really want them to leave their patients, so it's a security response usually. We had had some incidences out there. Last year, we had a code gray incident in which it resulted in a discharge of a firearm in the parking lot. That was obviously a law enforcement response as well. So me being with the sheriff's office, if there's sheriff's deputies there and it's on their floor with their patient, then yes, they're going to be involved. If it's off their floor or anywhere else, then it's going to be security's response. The response is quick. Usually in those particular areas that I've talked about, we have assigned guards there. They're not leaving. I have some guards that will move around. We call them rovers or are assigned to different locations, but in those specific areas, we have dedicated staff, and they can never leave. For example, on the third floor where PES is and currently, because there's construction going on, the other side is the long-term care. We have four guards at all times, and that is for a quicker response, so that we can hopefully help out. If it's okay, and it's on one side of the house, we call it, three A or on PES, we'll shift staff over there to address that issue at the time, but then once it's secure and everything is code four or calmed down, we'll go back to two and two.
Great. Thank you. And then final question. Our collaboration with San Mateo Police Department, I would assume, is just really strong as well, right?
Yes, yes. We have a lieutenant who works with us. His name is Lieutenant Pack right now. He's with the San Mateo Police Department. I meet with him regularly. We also have regular meetings with them. We've had some issues in the past for response to deal with cases or criminal conduct in those specific areas. As you can understand, when you have somebody who's conserved or has mental health issues and they assault somebody, there's a lot of moving parts. It's not just as simple as arresting them. It's not as simple as bringing them to the McGuire Correctional Facility. There's a lot of moving parts. What I can say is San Mateo PD has been very open arms with us. We have increased their response to the hospital to deal with very violent situations, but we meet with them regularly, and I text regularly or talk to the lieutenant from them. We also have their support when we have patients who walk away, and if they're there, if they're on scene. A lot of their patients come for PES for a fifty-one-fifty hold, and so if they're there and they can assist, they help us out.
Great. Thank you, thank you so much. Are there any additional comments?
I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about the training for these guards as they're dealing with individuals that are impacted by mental health?
Yes, that's actually a hot topic for Robert and I. I'm happy you asked. So they have what's called CPI. It's basically crisis intervention training. They are supposed to, the guards are supposed to do that within three months of being hired. We're trying to bump that up within thirty days, and we're also trying to look at increasing de-escalation. For me in law enforcement, we get eighty hours. The guards get eight, and then annually six. Clearly, in my opinion, they're not geared, ready to deal with a crisis intervention moment, and so that's what we've been focusing on. So their training is they come in, they get orientation, they get exposure to these high-profile areas, and we try to link them up with a training officer, a training guard who has experience. We also try to link them with people who communicate better. As you guys know, some people just communicate better than others. You can go to any training on the planet, and if you don't have it, you don't have it. What I'm trying to do is increase that. So pulling people out of their shells and have people talking more, it's been a little bit bumpy at first, just because the guards weren't prepared for it. So the training is increasing. We are working with ExecuShield to add de-escalation training on top of the CPI training. The other thing we're working on is hands-on stuff. As we all know, when a hands-on situation occurs, we kind of go back to our training. Well, I noticed that the guards, when I said, "Well, what was your training?", they didn't necessarily have a lot. Within that eight-hour block of CPI, they get two hours of physical part. So we're looking at trying to increase that, almost double that. So it's physical, and it's mental, and it's communication.
I'd like to add to that, if you wouldn't mind. I'm a registered nurse by background. My clinical expertise is in psychiatry, and the CPI training that Lieutenant is referencing is a standard across the nation for learning how to begin to interact with people who may be experiencing a significant mental health issue that may lead to violence. One of the hallmarks of what we are requesting is to differentiate the officers that are placed in these particular environments, and by so doing, incorporate them with a care team that is existing there. So registered nurses and psychiatrists and psychologists with whom they can interact regularly to begin to be exposed to and understand how one interacts with individuals in those particular environments. And so with the conditions that we are asking for, we are expecting, and Lieutenant has been very clear with ExecuShield about garnering the non-intermingling of security officers, so those with the most experience in those high-impact areas can routinely work there. And that establishes both trust relationship and the ability to be able to respond when a critical incident occurs.
And the last question, does the environment also allow for, say you have an incident with the guards, are there times where you come back and say, "What have you learned? What could we do better?"
Also a great question. Built into the process on all mental health units, and less so in the emergency department, but a initiative of San Mateo Medical Centers to create a debriefing process that occurs after each time someone is touched. That happens regularly on the psychiatric emergency services and inpatient mental health unit, and we expect to bring that to the emergency department and to process wherever it may occur on campus, so the guards have an opportunity to be able to say, "I'm okay. Everything is okay," and for us to think about what could have been different if we had it to do over again.
Supervisor Spear?
Lieutenant, I'm kind of interested in knowing why the guards who come to the hospital aren't already receiving training by ExecuShield. Why should that be placed on us and not on them?
Mr. Swinney, if you could speak directly into the mic?
Sorry about that. They do receive training, but it's not, one of the roles I have is a liaison between the county, the medical center, and ExecuShield, and I don't think that the specific training is enough. They get access to their immunizations, they get access to CIT training, but they're not getting enough training, and so we're trying to expand that. We're trying to make their orientation program longer, but in the, at the end of the day, when ExecuShield puts out their openings for positions, there's no specifics for the medical center. It's just a listing for a person who's interested in becoming a guard. But I think the difference is between a guard working, and this is not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful at all if it comes off this way, but there's something different from working at the Hall of Justice versus working in an acute medical center with patients. And so we're trying to take what ExecuShield has for the guard at the Hall of Justice and try to expand it so that it fits better with the hospital environment with patients that are special needs.
Well, since this is a extension of their contract, wouldn't it make sense to amend the contract, to require them to do specific outreach for persons that have the qualifications, and require them to provide a certain amount of training? Because if you're just bringing people off the street who want to be guards and then turning them over to you, they're nothing more than a, you know, an indeed organization. So I think we should expect more from them in terms of training, so that those that come to the hospital are prepared to do the job and aren't doing on-the-job training. Otherwise, you can just solicit people, you know, through various social websites.
Yeah, so I think we are, I think Robert could speak better on the amendment process of the contract, but we are actually looking at that. That is something that he could probably speak better on.
There are multiple things within the contract that require this training to be accomplished not on our dime, per se. It is required for them to be able to do this. However, it is consistent with how individuals like myself, a nurse, might come to a medical center and learn the craft of working with people who have significant mental illness. Not everyone comes with every single piece of information onboard that they need. However, in the last two years, we have taken a very pointed effort with ExecuShield to increase the ability of their individual guards. With that, again, recommending that we are able to provide them a way to pay for individuals who might be inclined to have that information ahead of time, but it was not attractive for ExecuShield or similar companies if they are not able to pay the level of wage that someone who has that kind of experience would expect. And so we are working very closely with them on the selection process and how they identify individuals, because that was not information or skill that ExecuShield necessarily had onboard. So working hand in hand.
Okay, you're making the case for us to make sure this new amendment to the contract requires specific actions by ExecuShield, as opposed to placing the burden on the county to provide that training. Otherwise, they're nothing more than a job referral company.
So we appreciate it.
I won't belabor it. I think I've made my point. Let me just ask you another question. And speaking recently to a representative of the California Hospital Association, he indicated to me that the aggression by patients on regular wards has increased greatly. Is that the case at our facility or not?
I would not say that we are higher or even at national levels with aggressive behavior on like an inpatient medical unit. There are occasions when an individual who might be experiencing dementia or some other, again, mental process, but be there for a medical issue, may strike out or be surprised by someone and have an event, but I don't believe that we are seeing a trending on the inpatient units for aggressive behavior.
I yield back.
Great, thank you so much. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I was wondering, would the hospital be willing to welcome the new supervisors to tour the hospital and kind of see for themselves what happens on a day-to-day? I think that might be helpful. I know this is, you know, a significant amount of money for this contract extension, but I do think there's nothing like being able to see for yourself what the services that's being provided, and so that's my question.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to host anyone he'd like to come and see.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to also add that the guards that provide this service at the hospital, I think it's important to note that many of them are people of color and have similar backgrounds to a lot of our patients. And I note that because, you know, those jobs, I think, are kind of like a stepping stone, and my hope is that by working with you, Lieutenant, and working at the hospital, that in the long run, many of those people who are in those jobs have a stepping stone to, you know, work in our sheriff's office or in law enforcement. And so while everyone absolutely does need more training, I do think, you know, the pay, the low pay that they get for this kind of work is, you know, essentially almost like an entry-level position, and I think that sometimes relates to the turnover. Would you say that's true? The turnover is part of, you know, the pay that folks are...
There are probably a couple of things there. I believe pay accounts for some of that. I believe the stress associated with working in an acute care medical center also attributes to turnover, if the individual did not expect to experience certain things when they came to work. If they have been used to working in other less demanding environments, coming to the medical center is a unique experience.
Absolutely. Okay, I just wanted to make those points, and I do think it's a good idea for our new supervisors to tour the hospital and kind of see what this money looks like in real life, right, when implemented? So thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
President, President Kenapa?
Yes. Supervisor Mueller?
I actually wanted, so first of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate my colleagues' comments and questions. I did want to ask, going to those questions, when the candidate comes, before you start the training, is there any baseline assessment of their readiness?
We place that on ExecuShield to determine that ahead of time. We do not interact with the individuals as they come until they arrive.
But before you start your training program that you're implementing, do you do any baselining to see where they, how ready they are actually prepared?
I don't believe that we have.
So that's a metric, actually, I really would encourage, because I'd like to look at it when it comes up to RFP in two years, to see what, you know, what are they doing? If we're not looking at that and then we're just training them, it's very difficult to understand what they're doing to prepare these candidates.
Appreciate that. Okay, seeing that there are no additional questions, we're going to go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker slips for item number two, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
In Zoom, comments now for item two for the agreement with ExecuShield. We have two hands raised. I will call for final comments after that second speaker, Martin Fox, followed by IT or IT. Martin, please unmute and begin.
We have the largest mental health closed treatment facility in the United States for veterans down in Palo Alto's building number five twenty... in the United States for veterans down in Palo Alto's building number 520. And if you would like a reference point for a facility that not only provides residential treatment, it includes a locked facility that's part of its behavioral health treatment system so that the building is designed around the way that the treatment is delivered. And I believe that you will find that there is longstanding training for any employee that the VA hires. Please contact the Public Affairs Office or send me an email. I'll arrange it for you. Thank you.
Please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name's Lisa. I'm with the, Lisa Tartaglia with One Life Counseling Center. We're a low-fee counseling center and based in San Carlos with nine locations in San Mateo County. We are receiving the Measure K District Two grant to support our UNA VIDA mothers group. We're very excited to get started. Our, our mothers group starts next.
Is this comment for item number two or for another?
I, I think so.
This is for, this is for an item later on the agenda. I think it's.
Oh, it is? Okay.
We'd normally hold the comment until the item is presented.
Okay. All right. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, any other comments? Madam Clerk, any other comments on Zoom?
Able to, are you able to hear me?
Oh, now I can, yes.
Okay, great. No further speakers.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any further comments or discussions from my colleagues at this point? Seeing none, with all that said, does a supervisor want to make a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize this amendment to the Executive Shield agreement?
So I'll go ahead and make the motion, but I am going to, as part of the motion, require that the county, because it doesn't require an addition to the amendment. It's actually an internal department function. I'll make the motion, but included in the motion is the requirement that the county start baselining the candidates with an assessment test so that we can look at what type, whether or not there's any training taking place or any preparation taking place.
Okay. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? All right. With that, we'll have a roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear. Thank you. Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
Thank you. And then President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item three, in which this board is acting as the governing board of County Service Area Number Eight to conduct a public hearing and to adopt a resolution setting the 2025 garbage and recycling collection rates for County Service Area Number Eight. I believe that this item is coming to us from Sustainability. I will ask the Department of Sustainability to introduce this item for us. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, President Canepa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Calgier, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin. My name is Effie Milionis Verducci, and this morning, and I'm the Assistant Director for the Sustainability Department. This morning, I'm pleased to be here to present the 2025 proposed garbage rates for North Fair Oaks. I'd like to start with providing our overall proposal for your consideration and then, which is a rate increase for garbage and recycling services in North Fair Oaks. And then I'd like to provide you with the background on how we have arrived at this recommendation. We're proposing an 11% increase for garbage and recycling collection rates for both residential and commercial carts and bins. And this is in order to adjust rates to the cost of providing those services. The proposed increase translates to a $4.56, 56 cents per month increase for the minimum bin and cart sizes in both residential and commercial. And this includes recycling and compost services. In the map here, the orange area is, shows North Fair Oaks. We also refer to this as County Service Area Eight. It is within the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, which is shown here in blue and is serviced by Recology. And for this hearing, we'll be focusing solely on this district. And I'd like to start off by going over the agency roles in providing waste collection services for CSA Eight. The South Bayside Waste Management Authority, I'll refer to it as SBWMA from this point forward, is a joint powers authority formed by 11 member jurisdictions, local government jurisdictions, and it's a service area from Burlingame to Menlo Park. This authority owns the Shoreway Environmental Center and provides oversight for the vendors and service providers that collect, process, and dispose of materials there. Recology San Mateo County provides collection services to CSA Eight, and they also provide the holiday tree pickups and the two free bulky item pickups annually. Then there's South Bay Industries, that's the truck that's exiting Shoreway Environmental Center in the infographic. South Bay Industries provides the processing, disposal, and transport of the materials collected by Recology at the Shoreway Environmental Center. With regards to rates, the county, the SBWMA receives an annual compensation application from its contractors, reviews those, and then allocates them to all the member agencies. Then on the right side, the county's responsibilities are to set the rates annually, which are based on the projected cost allocation in that compensation application for the forthcoming calendar year. We ensure contractor compliance. We make program recommendation and conduct special events. We manage customer feedback, and we participate as one of the 11 member agencies on the SBWMA board and the TAC. Coming into today's hearing, I'd like to just go over briefly the annual process for setting rates. These are the general components here on the screen. We are, as I mentioned before, we are required to set the rates to meet the projected cost of services. And as mentioned prior, the contractors, Recology and South Bay Industries, submit an application for their annual compensation with their projected cost of service for the upcoming rate year, which is a calendar year, and that is what's described here in the yellow. Recology's compensation is based on performance metrics related to collection trucks, such as lifts, truck time, and labor, and industry indices such as labor and fuel costs. And then South Bay Industries's compensation is comprised of operating costs, transferring the materials and landfill disposal costs, as well as administrative costs. And because it sits in San Carlos, there's a host, City of San Carlos host fee, and then the county franchise fees. Then in the light green, SBWMA reviews the contractor submissions, determines the revenue required to cover those costs for the forthcoming year, and allocates those costs to each jurisdiction. Then the member agencies review the same materials, and in our case, we project next year's costs. And then we're here in the blue, process today. Based upon those projections, we propose the rates. We notify the rate payers as well as hold this public hearing before this board in order to set the rates. Last year, the SBWMA rate report showed that higher costs will be incurred by member jurisdictions, primarily due to the new, beginning in 2024, primarily due to the disposal and processing costs under the new SBI contract, as well as increased fuel and labor costs, and then new services that were added to meet the state mandated Senate Bill 1383 requirements for organics collection and processing. For CSA Eight, for 2024, not this year, but last year, SBWMA determined that there would be a 19.3% gap between the 2023 revenues and the 2024 costs. As I mentioned, we use a cost of services approach. So the county and SBWMA employed several strategies in order to reduce the 2024 increase from 19.3 to 12.7 for last year. One decision made last year was to spread the cost across, the cost increase across two years, as well as apply other strategies, such as use of reserves. And we are in the second year of this strategy. So for this year, we are recommending an 11 points, an 11% rate increase in order to match the cost of services. This increase has been developed through our annual process. Again, the SBWMA board providing us the compensation increase that's required. Then our staff and our consultants review the contractor's compensation report. We analyze multiple rate scenarios, and then we check the data for, and the tables for accuracy. And then this year, we also applied a 2023 surplus that was available of $34,000. And then, given all of that, we identified the 11% that would be needed to match next year's costs. What does 11% look like? For the minimum, for the most common bin sizes, our rates will increase according to this table. So an 11% increase reflects $4.56 additional each month going from, so the minimum level of service for residential units, one to four units, is 64-gallon one bin or two 32-gallon carts. So for that, the 11% increase translates to an increase from 41.46 per month to 46.02 on the bill. And then this is the same amount of increase for the commercial mixed use and the residential five units and above for the 32-gallon carts. Some of these accounts have these charged via the property tax rule. So for those accounts, these increases will not be seen until July 1st, 2025. As part of this annual process, we conduct rate payer notification. So for, and we follow the Prop 218 requirements for that. In November 2024, our staff presented the proposed rate increases to the North Fair Oaks Community Council. We sent, in early December, we sent bilingual mailers that included today's hearing date and the proposed rates to each parcel owner. We also published in two newspapers, the hearing date and the information. And the mailer, and also the mailers gave information about how protests can be submitted to the county. As of yesterday, we have not received any protests by the clerk of the board. If there were a successful majority protest in writing from the property owners, the board would be prevented from increasing the rates for the service area. In CSA Eight, this could lead to larger rate increases in the future due to the approved solid waste contracts and the need to achieve cost recovery for those services provided. So the recommendation before you this morning for this public hearing is acting as the governing board to adopt a resolution effective January 1st, 2025, adopting the garbage and recyclables collection rates for CSA Eight as set forth in Exhibit A to the resolution. I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Effie. Are there any questions for Effie at this time?
Through the chair. I, I don't have questions, but thank you so much for that presentation. Oftentimes, when we see these increases, it's important to understand the outreach approach, how people are being notified, and I'm always interested in understanding if there are any protests that are, are being submitted. We do understand, I know I understand that this is a pass-along and it's the cost of doing service. But I'm always concerned when we're increasing rates, what this will do to those individuals on fixed incomes or who are just challenged. But again, I do understand the process. Thank you.
Great. Are there any other comments or, or questions? Okay, with that, we'll move to the public hearing with unanimous consent. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do I have unanimous consent? Seeing I do. With that, we'll move to the public hearing. Sukie, if we could take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have any speakerships for this item. So if you wish to speak, please provide me your speakership. And as Assistant Director mentioned, we did not receive any protest letters in clerk of the board office. Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Public hearing on Zoom now open for item three for the garbage and recyclable collection rates for County Service Area Eight in North Fair Oaks. Please raise your hand in Zoom to comment. Final call, public hearing, item number three.
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion that we, well, we, you know, thank you for doing that. I have a motion. Can I have a second? But I understand we can do unanimous consent. Is that correct?
To close the public hearing, correct, yes.
Great. Thank you so much. And so I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing there's no discussion, does a supervisor want to make a motion to adopt the resolution, adopt the 2025 rates for County Service Area Eight?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Great motion from Supervisor Gochet and seconded by Supervisor Corso. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
Thank you, and President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item four, which is another public hearing in consideration of adopting a resolution setting the 2025 garbage and recycling collection rates for the unincorporated, unincorporated franchised area. Again, I believe this item is coming to us from Sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you again. I will skip through some of the repetitive information, but this is a, a separate hearing for the proposed 2025 garbage and recycling rates for the county franchised area, and I'm pleased to be here to present it to you this morning. We'll skip straight to the, the lead on this district. I'd like to start with providing our overall proposed recommendation for increasing garbage and recycling rates in the county franchised area by 9.3%. And I will also give you the background on how we arrived at this number. The 9.3% recommendation would apply to both residential and commercial carts again. And then the rate increase would translate to $3.88 for the 20-gallon service for the commonly-used residential carts. And then the next size up is the 32-gallon. Those are by far the two most commonly used. And that would go to $4.64. That would be a $4.64 increase going from 49.61 a month to 54.22 a month. The commercial mixed use and five units or above rate for the 32-gallon cart is again a $3.88 increase. And this comes with unlimited recycling. Just to orient to the county franchised areas in the SBWMA service area, there are 10 pockets that this district represents. And this, for this rate hearing, we will be focusing solely on these, this CFA district. The process for setting the rates is the same as what I just described for North Fair Oaks, so I will spare repeating it here. And then, as mentioned already, last year, the SBWMA rate report showed higher costs incurred by member jurisdictions. So North Fair Oaks is one jurisdiction in the SBWMA, and CFA is a second one. We were given the same factors in projecting the 2024 costs. So again, a 2023 rate revenue would have created a 19.3% gap in revenues. So we used a cost of services approach last year for this district as well, and this year. And for this district, both the county and SBWMA again, employed several strategies to bring that cost increase down for 2024. We were able to propose and have adopted a 13.6 increase last year. And we applied strategies such as the use of reserves as well in this district, and we are in the second year of this strategy as well. So this year, to complete the phased strategy, 9.3 increases needed, 9.3% increases needed. Our same annual process was applied to this, where we get the compensation allocation from SBWMA. We review it, our staff, and then our vendors, our consultants. And then we look at multiple rate scenarios. We analyze for accuracy. We applied an $11,000 surplus this year and then identified the 9.3% increase that would be needed to cover 2025 costs. And then again, this is how it translates to the bill for the most commonly-used. And then again, this is how it translates to the bill for the most commonly used bin sizes, four dollars and sixty-one cent increase in the thirty-two gallon and for residential and three dollars and eighty-eight cents in the thirty-two gallon for commercial and mixed use. We did a very similar rate payer notification process for CFA. We, your board set the hearing and published the rates in November twenty twenty-four. We then sent mailers to each parcel owner with the proposed rates and today's date. The mailers gave information about the protest and to date, we have not received any protests. So the recommendation before you today is to adopt the resolution, adopting effective January first, twenty twenty-five, the garbage and recyclables collection rate pursuant to Exhibit A of this resolution.
Great, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments regarding this matter for the department? Okay, we'll now move to the public hearing with unanimous consent. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do I have unanimous consent? Great, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. The sponsor of the item is the county and we already heard from the Sustainability Department. And therefore, do we have any public comment? Who wants to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speakerships for item number four. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public on Zoom, public hearing item for item four, please comment. This is for the rates for the unincorporated franchise area. Final call, public comment, item four. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. With that, with unanimous consent, we'll close the, the public hearing. I'll bring this back for the board. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, does the supervisor want to make a motion to adopt the resolution, adopt the twenty twenty-five rates for County Service Area?
So moved.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, second, roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Goshier?
Yes.
And President Kenapa?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Effie.
Thank you.
We next have item six, a resolution authorizing a grant to Measure K funds not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars to Homework Central for literacy support, homework and tutoring programs, and expanded hours of support. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corso.
Thank you, President Kenapa. Before I introduce this grant, I wanted to give a brief overview of District Two's discre, District discretionary Measure K process that I hope will be informative for the public and for the new members of the board. Voters approved Measure K in twenty eighteen, as we know. So part of how the county distributes Measure K funding is through district discretionary budgets. And when I came into office, there was no clear process for how these decisions were made in District Two. And so what my team and I did is that we developed a, a process that included wide community engagement for District Two discretionary Measure K grants. We communicated what these grants would be intended for. And then when we approved our District Two strategic plan, we aligned our Measure K district discretionary funds with, with these applications. And I want to, you know, state that these are just recommendations and I personally take a lot of responsibility in recommending funding very seriously. So the application process that we created also includes, you know, scoring with the rubric and point system for how the, the grants, the applications score through that rubric. And we analyze applications very closely to make sure that we are bringing recommendations that are efficient uses of county funds. So with that, regarding Homework Central, Homework Central is a free after-school program that levels a playing field by providing academic support to students. It serves as a crucial resource for around two hundred students each year who don't have access to private after-school tutoring. The program is growing rapidly and Homework Central has a long track record in District Two, specifically in the city of San Mateo, of helping students of all socioeconomic backgrounds. But primarily with the focus on students who don't have, who come from lower socioeconomic status. So with this grant, Homework Central will expand programming to more students to provide science, culture and, culture and arts programming as well as after-school care and support families by extending hours at Sunny Bray Elementary School and Laurel Elementary School. And I respectfully request support in this Measure K grant. And I do believe we have Padma from Homework Central who is joining us via Zoom for some brief comments.
Wonderful. Padma should be making herself a panelist or themselves a panelist. Okay, great.
Sorry, I don't have video.
That's okay.
Hi, my name is Padma Garagia and I'm the Executive Director of Homework Central. We've, this is a twenty-six-year-old organization, so we've been in north central San Mateo for this long. We started out in local churches and so on as an after-school program, but now we're formally in schools, in four different schools in San Mateo, Sunny Bray Elementary, Park Elementary, Laurel Elementary, and Baywood Elementary. All our students are economically in need and/or have issues that require, that require them to have additional support in order to succeed at school and build the self-confidence and study habits needed to succeed at school. We are requesting this funding respectfully mainly because we've seen the need explode in the community. And for two main purposes, one is to increase the number of students and the other is to extend the hours. Part of various surveys that were done by the school district and, and other formats for, by parents said that they would, they would want the programs to be available until six o'clock so that it would help working parents. But we used to close at five o'clock. And therefore, part of this funding is going to be used to help us bring interesting and innovative programming in the area of arts, culture, and science for our students during the additional time that we are staying open. Our request is for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment remotely?
Madam Clerk, could you check for any public comments?
Sure, yes. And this is for item number six for Homework Central. Please do raise your hand for comment. No comments, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Corso, do you want to make the motion to approve this item?
Yes, so moved. And I also just want to add that I'm happy to share more about our district process, the rubric, the forums, and the, any resources around this that other supervisors are interested in. Thank you.
Great, Supervisor Spear?
I am not going to vote in favor of this request, not because I'm not supportive of after-school home assistance, but because I am not going to support any Measure K district funding that is not county-wide in nature. So this does not reflect on your process nor on the worthiness of any of these requests. I, I just believe that Measure K funding, as I indicated last week, needs to be spent on countywide projects and be something that we come to an agreement on because we need to do big things on behalf of our communities. I yield back.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Mueller?
So I, I, I respect Supervisor Pierce, Spears' position. I do think if going forward, it might be useful to have a study session on this. The difficulty that, that, and I respect the position completely, the difficulty that we have is that, and I fully admit, the discretionary Measure K process is clunky, but representing an unincorporated area of the county, I have no city backstops for my areas. So an example, like recently, we funded in Kings Mountain equipment for the, for the Kings Mountain Fire Brigade. And we've done so with respect to emergency radio resources for the coast, just basic infrastructure that cities usually would pick up. And so if the county is going to be moving away from discretionary Measure K, which we have used for those purposes, we really need to talk about how we can set up a specific budget for the unincorporated areas so that we have funding as a backstop for, for items like that that we can dip into.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion.
Second.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Supervisor Spear? Thank you, that's a no. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Goshier?
Yes.
Thank you, and President Kenapa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes with Supervisor Spear casting a vote.
Okay, we'll now move to item seven, a resolution authorizing a grant to Measure K funds not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to One Life Counseling Center for the UNAVIDA program. This item is again sponsored by Supervisor Corso, Supervisor Corso?
Thank you. One Life Counseling Center provides mental health services to San Mateo County, County residents, particularly those facing significant barriers like immigration status, economic hardship, and lack of insurance. The UNAVIDA program specifically provides culturally competent therapy in Spanish with a focus on parents and their children. This grant funds sessions with therapists focused on trauma awareness, resiliency, and social emotional learning with the aim of strengthening families. I do believe that we have Lisa Tartaglia in attendance on Zoom who will provide some brief comments and would welcome her to do so now.
Madam Clerk, could you?
Lisa, if you're on Zoom, could you please raise your hand? I don't see the name Lisa on here. Oh, perfect, thank you. Okay, let me promote you in a moment.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. My name's Lisa Tartaglia with One Life Counseling Center. And this grant will provide critical support to what, to UNAVIDA mothers, UNAVIDA's mothers' group, empowering us to expand our programming and reach more women in need. With these resources, we can offer additional educational workshops, childcare support, and mental health services, helping mothers build stronger families and communities. This funding will directly enhance their well-being, giving them the tools to thrive and foster a brighter future for themselves and their children. Our UNAVIDA program is essential because it provides a safe supportive space for mothers who often face significant challenges, including limited access to resources, healthcare, educational opportunities. Many of these women juggle multiple responsibilities from raising children to managing household needs and often lack the community or tools to navigate these complexities. By offering these, the tailored support such as parenting education, mental health resources, and peer networking, UNAVIDA empowers mothers to build stronger, healthier families and break the cycle of poverty. We appreciate you supporting our One Life Counseling Center UNAVIDA program.
Great, is there any additional public comment, Suki?
I don't have any speakerships from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please check for a public comment.
Sure, those on Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item number seven, District Two Measure K item to One Life Counseling Center. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right, Supervisor Corso?
So moved, I moved to approve item number seven.
Second.
Great, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Supervisor Spear? That's a no vote, thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
So I'm going to vote yes, but I really, again, one of us says I'm, I'm making a, a request to the president that I think Supervisor Spear would join for a study session on the issue.
Great, you know, thank, thank you so much, Supervisor Mueller, that's a, that's a great suggestion. We're working together, I believe, Supervisor Spear and, and subcommittee, so I appreciate your, your thoughts on the matter.
Thank you, Supervisor Goshier?
Yes.
Thank you, and President Kenapa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes with Supervisor Spear casting a vote.
All right, great, we have one last Measure K item, which is item eight, a resolution authorizing a grant of Measure K funds not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, the city of Foster City, for the Foster City Emergency Rental Assistance Pilot Program. Once more, this item is sponsored by Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. I'm excited to bring this item forward to establish a brand-new program at the city of Foster City to provide emergency rental assistance to residents facing displacement. Foster City Housing staff have reported receiving frequent inquiries from low-income residents, many of whom are seniors, that they can't make their rent and they're on the verge of losing their housing. These funds will provide emergency rental assistance specifically to low-income residents of below-market rate housing who demonstrate that they're at risk of becoming homeless. My hope is that this can grow into a larger program for the city of Foster City. And I'm proud that we are, that we will hopefully be creating a starting point with this grant. And I believe Nora Java, Nori Java, a housing coordinator with the city of Foster City, is here to make some remarks.
Good morning. I'm Nori Java with the city of Foster City, and I'm the housing coordinator in the Community Development Department. Thank you Supervisor Corso for recommending this, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for providing Measure K funds, especially for affordable housing. So this program, as Supervisor Corso mentioned, is a pilot program. It's for emergency assistance for those in below-market rate housing. And it will provide a critical safety net for those who have a sudden loss of income and can't afford to pay their rent. So the problem is that most of our residents in affordable housing have no safety net. They have no savings. They live month to month. And if somebody loses their job or is on disability or has an accident and is temporarily disabled, they can't pay their rent. And you miss one rent payment and it adds up very quickly. The city does work with these tenants, if they are in city-owned housing, to provide payment plans, but not all BMR housing providers offer that. So people are at risk of losing their housing. And to provide this safety net will make a critical difference in our community, so thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you very much.
President?
Yes.
Supervisor Spear? This is a really important issue. Last year, I spent, I don't know, three or four days at the San Mateo courthouse, listening to the unlawful detainer calendar. And then meeting with many residents who were in the process of losing their housing because of lack of payment of rent. And the process is actually not well-defined because we do provide legal aid with funding for them to represent persons who are subject to eviction. But they normally arrive at the pre-settlement conference stage, and at that point, the only thing they're able to do is prevent the eviction from being registered on the credit report of the resident who's losing their housing. In many of these cases, it's three or four thousand dollars of arreages. So as we look to the future, I am very interested in seeing us do a countywide pilot program that would address these issues at the front end when the eviction is first being registered so that we can keep people in their housing. Matthew Desmond, the professor who spoke at the conference we had a couple of years ago, said that once people lose their housing, they are in a downward spiral into poverty and they never, ever are able to re, rebound from that. They lose their furnishings, they have to start all over again, and that's how they end up in their cars or in shelters. So it's a serious issue. Again, I applaud the interest in wanting to do something for Foster City. I would like to see it done countywide. I yield back.
Great, thank you so much.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Also, if I can just mention, we may also learn from East Palo Alto as we have a rental assistance program in place that a rental assistance program in place that is doing just this very thing, so if we could probably bring them in to have a conversation, we are preventing individuals from being evicted and put on, put on the streets.
Great, thank you Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that these kinds of programs are really important because, you know, safety net services like Samaritan House, for example, are oversubscribed. And so while there are cities in our county, like Supervisor Goshia described, that have done this work already, there are gaps where this isn't happening, and I do think we should look at it countywide. But in the meantime, I think it's important to move forward with programs that have the need, and this need honestly, very likely, is everywhere. But I do think that just overall, there are certain communities that have more needs, who face very real equity issues, and so I guess that comment is just in general in terms of the moving potentially to countywide. Regarding this specific Measure K request, I want to make sure that folks understand that the folks that this program would help, this pilot program would help, were referred to Samaritan House and were not approved, and so this is really another layer of a safety net. So with that, I look forward to the vote on this request.
Very much.
I just have, so I think when I asked for the study session, you politely told me that you guys were going to deal with it, Measure K Subcommittee first and then decide. And I just wanted to make that clear for the record because I'm sure I'm going to ask, get asked later. So if that's not the correct understanding, please let me know. All right, thank you.
Pardon me? Oh, one second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You helped with my phone, thank you. Do we have public comment at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speaker steps from all chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Comment on Zoom for item number eight, District Two Measure K item to the City of Foster City. Please click raise hand to comment. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very, very much. We need a motion. May I have a motion Supervisor Corzo?
I move to approve item, I think it's eight. Let me make sure.
Correct, yes.
Yes, thank you.
You have a second. Roll call, please.
Sure. Thank you Supervisor Spear. Thank you Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Goshia.
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Spear casting a vote.
Great, hard to believe, but this is the last item on our agenda. It's item nine, a resolution establishing a code of conduct for members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Spear, and I am the co-sponsor. I will ask Supervisor Spear for any comments that she has to introduce this item. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me thank our county attorney, Mr. Niblin, who worked with me in crafting this particular code of conduct. It is similar to codes of conducts that are in place in cities and counties around the state. This is our promise to our constituents to act responsibly, respect each other, and respect all county staff, in addition to the members of the public. It's our promise to encourage open dialogues, no matter our differences. It's a promise to hold in confidence closed-session deliberations, and it's a promise to engage in vigorous and respectful inquiry and debate. There is a enforcement tool through censure and any other authority that the board would have, and with that, I recommend an I-vote.
Great, thank you very much Supervisor Mueller.
So I think it's, I support this. The only question I had was with respect to item nine, where it indicates the second, well, I'll just read it, "When bringing items for consideration at board meetings, board members will be prepared, and then the second part, and will strive to be as concise as possible." And that portion just gave me pause because I tend to ask a lot of questions, and there have been times that I've been on this board and not been in, and been in a circumstance where not everyone agreed with those questions. And so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't setting myself to be in a position in a heated issue where I could get in trouble for asking a lot of questions.
I guess a couple of things I'd say about that. As Supervisor Spear noted, we, you know, she had tasked me with doing some work on this on the basis of some principles that she had laid out, and I will say that that particular language is language that I found in at least one other code of conduct that struck me as perhaps reflecting best practice, but I would note it's modified by the term "as possible," which is, to put it in the context, of course, some matters, you know, require. And I think it's ultimately up to the board members themselves to decide how much inquiry and conversation is required with respect to any particular item. So that, again, is not intended by any way to stifle, you know, appropriate and, you know, sort of needed inquiry into matters. And again, it's ultimately the board itself that decides what's, what's appropriate. And that's usually done with, in collaboration with the board president in any particular meeting in terms of moving things along.
I'm not sure that explanation makes me comfortable in terms of the ability to have minority viewpoint for the rest of the board to decide what is appropriate.
And the other thing I'd say is, of course, you know, subject to the sponsors of the, of the items, you know, consent, we can massage this language as folks are comfortable, even here.
Mr. President, if it would make the supervisor more comfortable, we can just strike that from the code of conduct.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Make that as a motion.
We'll be prepared, we can end it, end it there. Thank you.
Great, yes Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. So I want to ask a couple of questions regarding number eight in the code of conduct. It refers to the schedule for submitting items to the board agenda, and I want to just note that it's my understanding that many, if not, I'll just say many, items at times do come in later than the schedule and possibly even including this one. And so for this item specifically, it just kind of gives me pause. I don't want us to set ourselves up to not be adhering to the code of conduct, and so could we get some insight on that, maybe, I don't know, from the clerk or from county attorney Niblin or county executive Caligi? I want to make sure that, you know, we balance getting our items in on time with the reality of, you know, how pressing certain things can be at times in our workloads. So does anyone have something to add on that?
Well, I guess what I'd say is, it's not been my experience, and I really should defer to the county executive and to, and to the clerks with respect to all this, it's not been my experience that we've had extraordinary issues with, with timeless. It is, in fact, the case that we sometimes have late ads that are, you know, driven by just sort of the depressive business that comes up after the time that the ordinary schedule dates have passed. So I think this is just more of a notion of a commitment that when and as circumstances allow, we try to be as prompt as possible in getting materials so that staff isn't jammed up at the last minute, you know, trying to get things in. But, but again, the most important thing is the public's business gets done, and you all as board members are the ultimate arbiters of, you know, what the public business needs to be, again, working in collaboration with the county executive and the board president.
And I would just add that, you know, I do emphasize to department heads to get their materials, materials in on time and so that we can get it to the board on time with the requisite amount of time. As you remember, two years ago, we pushed those dates back to give the board more time to review. But having said that, I'm certainly flexible on matters that are pressing. Certainly, those come up regularly and we evaluate them, and I don't think I've ever denied that opportunity to anyone to get on the board, so we'll continue to do that looking at it on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. I think like my overall concern with this one is just that we, we all understand that late ads happen due to several reasons, and I'm not so worried about department, like county staff items, but more so items from, from us as supervisors. Sometimes do kind of, I don't, wouldn't say happen last minute, but, you know, there are just pressing things that, that need to be added with urgency and still on time, but I mean, in terms of the internal agenda, right? Agenda review, what, two to three to four weeks ahead of time?
Right, and certainly, we're going to remain flexible with the board on those items, and, and we understand the press of business, so absolutely.
Supervisor Spear?
This particular provision was to address concerns that I heard about relative to there being a reluctance to place something on the agenda. And so this is an effort to encourage, to the greatest extent possible, that items be allowed to be placed on the agenda as long as, you know, they're timely and the opportunity is available. So this is not to curtail placement, it's to allow for a more flexible process by which items can be placed on the agenda.
Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Okay, my next question was just regarding the, I think like the last couple of lines of the code of conduct are very weighty, right? They're, they have implications for, you know, what happens if the code of conduct isn't adhered to. And I just wanted, for the sake of the public, to kind of get an explanation of what does it mean to be censured, and then in addition, you know, take any other actions within the board's legal authority, if maybe we can get a description of what those actions might be.
Thank you, through the, through the chair Supervisor Corzo. A couple of things I'd say by way of preface, and one is that many of the, I think, as you read through the code of conduct, many of you who've been at this for a long time, either because of school, serving on a board of trustees or city council or other places, you'll note that a lot of these things are statements of law, actually, or just a confirming of the intention to comply with legal requirements that, that come from other places. And I guess, secondly, with respect to censure, censure is a process whereby the board would adopt essentially a resolution that states its displeasure. It's maybe stronger than that, but the notion that the board has determined that a board member has run afoul of, you know, agreed principles or run sometimes afoul of controlling principles that govern the way the, the board does work. It's not, aside from being a statement of displeasure or a statement of, a statement that the board has taken umbrage with respect to conduct by a colleague, that's the legal effect of censure. Now, there are other things that I guess in theory would fall within the scope of the code of conduct that might run afoul of, again, other laws, things that might be in the government code, things that might sit in other, the ordinance code, and there may be mechanisms in those bodies of law that would be relevant and that the board might be able to look to. But, you know, it'd be really, actually rather difficult to catalog all those various things in this, in this code of conduct. The notion was that, look, if we have a violation of the code of conduct, the board could, again, state for the record, by way of a formal action, its displeasure with the conduct of, of a colleague, and, and that isn't in exclusion to other remedies that might be available under law. That was, that was what we're trying to do there.
Thank you. My final question is regarding number 10. I think I'm a little concerned about just how, like some, how subjective some of these things can be in terms of number 10 specifically. The last line, "Board members also recognize that conversations should focus on policy and refrain from direction regarding operations." That's a really fine line, I think. We had an item just in this meeting earlier where we got a little into operations, and so can you help us understand how the county would be helping the board define what that line is and, and, you know, how we can all be held kind of to the same standard around, around that?
Thank you, and I'm going to defer, actually, to the county executive as we, as we work our way through this, but I think we were trying to set forth a general principle that, you know, the board operates at the strategic level, that the board frankly does its work primarily through the county executive and department heads, and that it refrains from giving sort of granular level operational direction to county staff members. But it's the notion that the board, again, is looking to set, again, broad strategic guidance, it's sort of that shared responsibility with the county executive, who is then responsible for, as his name indicates, for executing on the board's vision, and wanting, again, to avoid a situation where a board member might be having conversations with operational staff about, you know, how a, how a particular thing happens, rather than this being sort of broadly where we want the county to go. I, again, would ask maybe the county executive if you had any further gloss on that.
Yeah, I really appreciate the question. Clearly, the board has interaction with staff, but, you know, I think I've asked all board members that when there's a particular direction or a request, that it come through me so that I could work with the staff members to execute upon that and fulfill your, your visions. Otherwise, it gets very confusing for staff members as to who they're answering to and what the priority should be. And, and I think that systems work relatively well. I'm available 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and I've encouraged anyone to call me anytime to get those issues handled. But clearly, you know, staff's available to help inform decisions that you make or to answer questions that you, you may have, but when it comes to direction, I prefer the board to come through me.
Thank you, and then just a last quick statement. I just want to thank the two authors of this code of conduct for taking that initiative to move it forward. I, as I've previously stated on this dais, I have been very interested in our board looking at bylaws, governance standards, processes standards. I think it's, you know, as an incoming supervisor, two years ago, it was very unclear to me how to move certain things forward because they were done differently by different people, and that was difficult to navigate, to say the least. So I really appreciate this code of conduct, and I look forward to expanding it and evolving it and providing more clarity on some of the processes. And I would encourage us to maybe in the future engage in a process that's more thorough in terms of setting a vision and just many, the school board, when I was on it, we, we went through kind of a lengthy process, and it's a really good process to build a shared vision as a new team, and so I would encourage us to do that in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, I do hope that we can accomplish some of that in our March retreat.
Mr. President, I move adoption.
Okay, second. Okay, before we, before we do that, we have to take public comment. I just have a clarifying question through the, through the county attorney. My understanding is our practice right now, and I don't know if it's going to, if it's changed, I don't think it is, but that if there are any late, late items that get approval, it's the approvals from the CEO and the board president, is that correct? That has been our practice, yes. And that's primarily, again, just to make sure that we're not getting jammed up in terms of the administrative work that needs to happen to actually get it on the agenda. We haven't historically, you know, sort of looked at that on a sort of a subject matter or substantive basis. Again, it was more of a, a process thing. That's been our practice. Great, wonderful. Do we have a public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from, from chambers for this item, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Comment on Zoom open for item number nine for a code of conduct. We have three hands raised and followed by a grace X. Anne, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I ask that the board act as a single body when representing the unincorporated areas of the county, not just a representative of district only. I ask that conduct be appropriate for that collaboration. Open communication with the public is extremely important. The previous way the board operated was each district rep pushed for their agenda and tried to get three votes. Unincorporated areas have advisory boards, but no government that controls the budget. As a former member of MECO's Community Council Advisory Board, our requests and opposition to Cypress Point development was ignored by the Board of Supervisors. We relied on Supervisor Mueller to represent us, and he often was ignored. We need a more collaborative process to be implemented and a budget be established for each unincorporated area. It is imperative that the board act as a single body for the unincorporated areas that have no city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Grace X, followed by Martin Fox. Grace, please unmute and begin.
Yes, I apologize. I did not see a link to the, the code of conduct, so I might be redundant on something. I think this is a great idea, but, and it should be extended to every county commission and board as well. But I have concerns about how it's going to, it can be manipulated or abused. For example, to the question of the issue that I brought up during public comments earlier, that I feel is being brushed under the carpet, I wonder if this alleged behavior was by a conservative, if it would be treated the same way, or if there's a conservative on the Board of Supervisors, if they will be singled out. Moreover, question whether the code will apply to social media posts of this board, such as Jackie Spear stating that Trump is a cult leader, just like the Branch Davidian, David Korsesh. It will end badly. A reminder that 52,000 people voted for Trump, or the fact that she is a 2016 election denier. So I just would like to know, how far will this code extend? Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. And Martin Fox, I don't see your hand up any longer. Please raise if you'd like, or I will close comment at this time. Seeing no further hands, Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
Great. Are there any final comments on this item? Mr. President, just to clarify, I did note that there was a motion and a second, and I'm just going to incorporate in that motion and understand that we're striking some text in section nine, specifically everything after "board members will be prepared." Great. Before, before we do that, are there, are there any other comments? I'd like to make some comments. So first of all, I want to thank you Supervisor Spear for your leadership on bringing this item to the board, and I'm honored to co-sponsor this resolution with you. As elected officials, we have a profound responsibility to uphold the trust of those we serve, the residents of our great county. With every decision we make, every word we speak, and every action we take, we represent not just ourselves, but the values, hopes, and expectations of our community. Today's resolution is more than just a formality. It is a testament to our commitment as leaders to foster integrity, respect, and collaboration within our board and our broader government. By adopting this code of conduct, we are taking a meaningful step toward ensuring that our service is guided by the highest ethical standards and rooted in the unwavering principle of advancing the public good. With this resolution, we are demonstrating that good governance starts with accountability, respect, and a clear commitment to the people we serve. To my fellow board members, I urge you to join us in supporting this resolution. I think we're all there. Let us show the residents of San Mateo County that we are united in our dedication to integrity, transparency, and fairness. And to the residents of this county, thank you for entrusting us with this incredible responsibility. This code of conduct is for you, and it's a reflection of our unwavering commitment to serve you with honor, respect, and integrity. So there's a motion on the table, right? There's a second on the table. Is there a roll call, please?
Thank you. I just to confirm, a motion was made by Supervisor Spear and seconded by Supervisor Corzo. Wonderful. Thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Before we adjourn this meeting, through our county attorney, will we be coming back to, for you to report out? There's nothing that needs to be reported out today. Okay. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. All the time is now 10:54 a.m. Meeting is adjourned.